Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:05 and I'd like to officially call the Special Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Nelson. Lanier. Childress.
Here.
Abarra.
Here.
House.
Here.
Please drop.
Here.
Here. And a quorum is present. Do you want to, is he going to say here?
He did.
Oh, he did. Okay. All right. Great, great, great. Okay. All right. The first item on the agenda is audience comments and the first person is Agnes Strop. Welcome.
Good evening. And thank you very much for your dedication to the students of Flossmar. I have, I'm going to speak about on 7B catalyst for educational change. We've heard from two meetings, truancy behavior absenteeism and increased parental involvement. When you do your catalyst for coaching, will you work on those issues? Because those are the issues that, that you've addressed at two different meetings. And I've never gotten, I've never received an answer, so you can stop me if you're going to give me an answer. I think it's essential because we were talking, you were talking last, the last meeting about scores for 3.5, scores 3.0 with target one, two, and three. How are you going to get a target of four or a three when you're dealing with absenteeism, truancy, behavioral issues, and lack of student involvement? Also, you have to realize the essential of doing homework. Everybody here that attends the meetings takes things home, usually. Now, I shouldn't say that, but most people, professionals take things home. And when you're in school to do homework, homework prepares students for the world of work. I'm also going to talk about adaptations, which would be 8A. Adaptations of standard-based grading. Now, we've, we've been waiting since fall for the report cards. The grade levels have been below level in all schools in reading, math, computation. And how are you going to do standards if you cannot address the issues of improvement reading, math, and computation? So before you do that, when, if you're going to do a report card, you have to realize that the issues that have to be brought up before you can address score four, score 3.5, score 3.0, target one, target two, target three. You will rarely, rarely receive a score of 3.0 if you're dealing with truancy, behavior issues, absenteeism, and lack of, of homework being turned in. So I'd like you, before you ignore the report cards or throw it out, please address the issues that we'd like to see the test scores. If they're improved, we would promise the test scores that they would be done in spring. This is almost summer. So when you redo the, I'd like to see what the growth is. And before you get rid of the report cards, please address, address the academic issues. Before you get a child ready for the world of work, you have to make sure that they understand math, they understand reading, they're not below grade level. And every school district and every school in this district has areas which are below level that needs to be worked on before you just, in my opinion, just get rid of the report card. Are you getting rid of the report card because there's no growth? Are you getting rid of the report card because you want to see growth? And that's why we'd like to see the, the scores. And we would promise the scores in the fall that this would be spring. This is May 20th and it's almost summer and we still haven't seen the second semester scores. Thank you very much. And if you have answers for me, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you. I thank you for the time and I do appreciate you working diligently for the students of Flossmar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we have Deborah Spain.
Hi, I'm Deborah. Good afternoon, good evening, I should say to everyone. Thank you. My comment is on the detention pond. I've been a resident of Heather Hill since the early 70s. And as a resident, I am in support with option one that Mayor Nelson had mentioned where it's the underground basin. I want that option. Where the construction of the storm sewer is going to run under the by dock, Flossmar by dock project that runs south of Sterling as well as Maryland and south of Lawrence adjacent to the Heather Hill School. We also want that to go under in the concrete vault underneath the tennis, the tennis courts and for the tennis courts to be rebuilt because I thought, or I feel that that has always added charm to our community, our neighborhood. The other thing that was mentioned at the last village meeting was that there were two detention ponds, one at Belantre, Belantre, and that's on a playground. The other one was mentioned at Levin, Levin Avenue. That is at a playground as well. It is not where it's a school, Heather Hill School. The other thing is I was curious to find out how many residents actually received the original notice that there is going to be, that there was going to be a detention pond built on the school premise. And I got like 64 signatures on the petition that saying, that stated that no one knew or aware that this was going to go on originally. We just found out as latecomers and as taxpayers, we just wanted to be abreast. Thank you.
Thank you. What's that? We'll get your contact information so we can follow up.
Thanks, Ms. Smith.
I would like to follow up.
Absolutely.
Yep. Definitely. Follow up with both. Okay. The next item on the agenda is recognition. And the first recognition is National History Day State Competition Participants. We're doing things a little differently because we have so many students today, which is really exciting. So we're going to bring in one set to recognize at a time.
Can we speak a little louder?
We're doing something a little different today. We, because we have so many students being recognized, we're going to bring in one group at a time.
Are all names already?
Not yet.
Yep. National History Day State Competition Participants. Welcome.
Yep. So right there. That's perfect. Okay. All right. We got a big crew. All right. So good evening, Flossmar School District 161 Board of Education members and everyone here tonight. I would like to recognize our scholars who participated and excelled in two of our Parker Humanities Project-based learning competitions. So I'm Linda O'Dwyer. I teach both 7th and 8th grade social studies, that section of humanities program. I'd also like to recognize, but I don't think they're here tonight, is Emily Nocotra, Huda Hussein, and Katie Garland. They teach the ELA portion of our class. And I also want to recognize our instructional coach Tiffany Washington to share her talent and her skills with our group that went to Edgemaham. So we'll talk about that next after this group, too. So our first group is the state qualifiers and state champions for the National History Day Competition. So we've been utilizing NHD for the last 10 years and we built a really solid program, which is evidenced from our last three competitions because we've had several state qualifiers and state champions who qualified for nationals. However, it takes an amazing amount of research, argumentative writing, talent, teamwork skills, and hard work to advance to these levels. So that's where I'm giving you guys credit. Okay? And this group here tonight rose to that challenge. The theme this year was turning points in history and teams of five were able to produce either a paper, a website, a documentary, exhibit board, or performance. And I'd like to call the names of the people who are here tonight to recognize them. So first is Isabella Davies. So just come get your certificate and come back. Julie's not here yet, is she? Okay. Alilinde. Alex Marlowe. Sophia Sanchez. And Caitlin Woods. And Shyla Viner. All right, good. So I'm going to also read the names of the other ones who couldn't make it tonight. So we've got Julie Jenkins, Charlotte, Charlotte Aceves, I'm sorry, I'm saying Aceves, right? Okay. Aceves. Brielle Atkinson. Christina Faith Brown. Emilean De Hubert. Addison Graham. Alexandra Jones. Kayla Jones. Sadie O'Keefe. Mia Paskey. This is a huge list. Macaya Rufus. Salash Amlin. Anna Sakima. Darby Van Vliet. And I think that I started with Julie Jenkins, right? So we're good. All right. Awesome, you guys. Congratulations.
Dr. Smith, a photographer, set up, he's perfect on that.
Okay. I'll do that. So I'll go up. All right. So next group we have is our Edgemaham group. So I've got Simon and Braylon, come on up here. All right. So our second group, these are the winners of the Edgemaham competition. And Tyler Harris is not here, so hopefully he'll show up because he said he was coming. So this is our first year introducing Edgemaham into our humanities program and it allowed them to showcase their artistic talent and historic interpretation to a whole new level. So rules were to work with in groups of three or less, create a two-minute skit, poem, or song based on research, historical interpretation, and artistic expression. So we were blown away by every single project that was made and so very excited to hear when this group actually did their skit, the Boston Tea Party, were in the top 20 winners across the country, grades six through 12, who won an all-expense-paid trip to New York City to see Hamilton and meet the cast. So I'd also like to thank the Parker PTO for sponsoring a trip in addition to the trip that we went to. So we had an extra day in the morning and they allowed us to go to see the Statue of Liberty, a Wall Street, and the 9/11 Memorial. So that was really nice of them to do. So we're very thankful that they did that. So I just want to say congratulations. I brought our playbill when we went. It was a really great experience and like, when does this ever happen in school? So we just really celebrated this. And needless to say, this is going to continue. We're going to make sure that this is a part of our program. So they did really awesome. So here's the certificates. So Braylon Brewer. And Tyler Harris is not here tonight, so hopefully we will see him. So congratulations.
You can come up for a photo if you want. Yep. Come on up.
Thank you for all your hard work, Ms. O'Dwyer. We certainly appreciate all that you do for our students.
Your flip, flip.
Okay. And now we will have the Math Bowl participants.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Thompson. I have the pleasure of introducing our Math Bowl participants. These students participated May 2nd and 3rd at Prairie State College. We had 24 students altogether in grades one through eight. These are the students that are here with us tonight. I would like to recognize our first grader, John Perry. Second grader Connor Chung. Also in second grade, Jesper Golden. Third grader Harrison Geisel. Next, we have fourth grader Jackson Simowicz. Fifth grader Raheem Sequoia. See, also tonight, we have seventh grader Alicia Atkins. Also in seventh grade, we have Simon Reyes. And eighth grader Isaac Hernandez. Congratulations, everyone. Fine job in Math Bowl. I would like to recognize our third and fourth grade team who ended up with a sixth-place finish overall. So congratulations, third and fourth grade. We have several students that are not here tonight, so I would like to recognize them even though they couldn't make it this evening. Chenendum Achara. Muna Achara. Eric Almond. Joshua Calzonzi. Anaya Harris. Ava Lee. Henry Mayer. Abriella Mondline. Sebastian Oliveras. Uche Okofor. Denaya Spragginz. Martin Stalk, who was our first place overall winner. Charles Weingam.
Congratulations again.
He wants to stay. He's going to be on the board.
Okay. The next, oh, I'll wait.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is with immense pride and joy that I stand before you today to celebrate the outstanding achievements of eight exceptional students from Flossmar School District 161. On March 16th, 2024, these young scholars participated in the 34th Annual Illinois Math and Science Junior High Math Contest for the very first time. The contest consisted of three separate rounds, individual, team, and creative thinking. George Aery, Connor Boko, Christina Faith Brown, Elliot Chan, Avery Chung, Isaac Hernandez, Jackson Simowicz, and Josiah Turpew all competed in the competition. Together, this talented team achieved a phenomenal feat by winning second place in the team portion of the contest. Jackson Simowicz and Christina Faith Brown also won fourth place in the critical, in the creative thinking portion of the contest. These students have not only showcased their mathematical skills, but have also demonstrated the power of determination and the importance of striving for excellence. Let's give these scholars a round of applause.
Okay. And our final recognition is for Above &amp; Beyond.
All right. Tonight, we are pleased to honor our pre-kindergarten and EC team for the fourth quarter Above &amp; Beyond Award for Teachers of Excellence. They actually were all nominated within a few months of each other just by chance. So it was the perfect opportunity to get them all together. Also, they recently put on the pre-K prom and it was pretty awesome. So it was a great chance. So I'll just quickly read this to them. We have Jennifer Burnett. A staff member said, Jennifer goes above and beyond her duties as an EC teacher. She genuinely loves her students and works with the families to ensure her students get the best possible education and outcomes. Celine Willard was nominated by a parent. She is always giving 110% to make sure her students have the best experience and education that they can receive. My daughter enjoys all of her lessons and I know that my daughter learns a lot. all of her lessons and I know that my daughter learns a lot from her class. Christina Conroy was nominated by a colleague. Ms. Conroy is always sharing resources with the team. She is always available to help. She goes above and beyond her duties as a teacher to help the school and her students in many capacities. And Kristy King was nominated by a parent. It takes a special person to teach pre-kindergarten. Ms. King exemplifies that. She's great at what she does and we've noticed a positive change in our son. We are so lucky that you are setting the foundation for our students and so appreciative of how you've developed our pre-K ECE program.
Thank you so much, pre-K team. We, on the behalf of the board, we are certainly grateful for all that you do. And I got to see some of those, the pictures of the pre-K prom, and they were just amazing. Unbelievable.
Okay, may I have a motion to go to Executive Session for Matters Relating to Personnel, 5 ILCS 120/2C1, Matters Relating to Litigation, 5 ILCS 120/2C11, and Matters Relating to Collective Bargaining, 5 ILCS 120/2C2.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We'll be back in hopefully 15 or 20 minutes.
Cam, we'll give it to Mr. Bond, okay?
I give...
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
Here.
Here.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the committee reports, Community Engagement Committee.
Yes, at our most recent meeting, we spent a big bulk of the time kind of talking about our volunteer process, the volunteer handbook that's in our, Ms. Dolores Morris, who shared a proposal to potentially share pre-case services with District 161 and her own private business. So Ms. Janiki and I did have a follow-up meeting with Ms. Morris after that, actually just last week. So we kind of covered all of those bases, but we're really excited to kind of move forward on the volunteer side. Just a little bit more structure, a little bit more support for our future volunteers, and hopefully funnel some additional, you know, resources into our buildings.
Oh, we did talk about the standards-based grading report card and how that would look and how to reach the community, how we could convey the new changes to the parents and our whole community.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, and now the superintendent's report.
Well, good evening, Board of Education and audience, not only those who are in person, but those who are watching at home as well. This is a bittersweet moment because we're in the process of completing our last Board of Education meeting of the 2023-2024 school year. Of course, our work proceeds year-round, but when we get together again on June 10th, the official school year will be over, and I'll be sharing an update on the first day of summer academy. Tonight, we recognize a number of District 161 students and staff members, and I'm so proud of their achievements. Our students are participating in activities that will help them as they move forward in their school careers, and I'm excited to see their future achievements. I met with a community member today who commented on the number of Parker Junior High School students who have been or will be recognized at the various graduation events at HF High School over the next few days, and I just couldn't have been more proud of our students, staff, and families. Their hard work is creating incredible opportunities for kids, truly. Our community deserves this. All of the teachers and the students certainly deserve the recognition for all that they have accomplished, and I'm very proud of their hard work. Given that this is the last meeting before summer break, it's also the last full week, and that means tons and tons of activities. Tomorrow afternoon, we'll be recognizing our District 161 retirees for the school year. Each of these staff members have left a positive impact on our school, community, and I mean personally. I'm thankful to all of them for how they've represented our schools themselves and the careers that they've had in District 161. In alphabetical order, the retirees for the 2023-2024 school year are Kimberly Banks, Ted Carter, Roz McQuarter, Thomas Morgan, Lori Schroder, Ingrid Van, Judy Zubek, Kathy Kanawa, Deb Sheer, and Mary Curtin. Tomorrow's going to be a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to the laughs and tears that go with retirement celebrations. Wednesday, Heather Hill is hosting their 5th grade social from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Western Avenue has their 5th grade social from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. Thursday evening at 6:00 p.m. is the induction for the National Junior Honor Society, and it's always a meaningful event for our students and families. And then finally, on Friday at 6:00 p.m., we will all have on our dancing shoes for the 8th grade dance, which runs from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. It is absolutely one of the highlights of the school year, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the students dressed up and having fun and just a really nice social event to cap off the school year. The following week, I do want to draw your attention to three additional dates. Tuesday, May 28th is the end-of-the-year party from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Parker Junior High School. We'll have food trucks, games, fun activities, just a number of events to end the year with a little bit of laughter and joy. Wednesday, May 29th, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. is the 8th grade graduation at HF High School. Then the last notable date of the school year is Thursday, May 30th, which is the last day. So our students and staff have had a great school year, and while most of the students and staff will leave at the end of the day next Thursday, we are going to continue putting the finishing touches on all of the plans for next school year, so we're going to hit the ground running in August. That's the end of my report.
Any questions?
That end-of-the-year party will be rain or shine.
Rain or shine. We've proved that we can pivot in about eight minutes.
Ah, thank you for everything. It's very exciting to hear all of the end-of-the-year festivities. Appreciate all the work that you're doing, Dr. Smith.
My pleasure.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, including personnel report 24-017, the co-teaching professional development and coaching contract with Catalyst for Educational Change, and the donation of $400 from the Burke family to support the musical at Flossmore Hills School.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Agwara.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Lee Strong.
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. That was really kind of the Burks to offer. Yeah, that's wonderful.
Supporting our program.
Okay, the next item on the agenda are the action items. May I have a motion to approve the adoption of standards-based grading?
Question. Did we address the half point with regards to that?
Did we address what?
The half point.
Oh.
Yes, we are utilizing the point marks.
Okay, great, thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the adoption of standards-based grading and report card updates?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Childers.
Yes.
Lee Strong.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Ralph.
An enthusiastic yes.
Agwara.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes, and the motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the proposed contract with the Flossmore Education Association as presented in the executive session?
So moved.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Hold on one moment. Just to kind of provide a little bit of context, especially for the audience, you know, we have tonight for action the recommended collective bargaining agreement between the Flossmore Education Association and the District 161 Board of Education. I want to commend both sides of this negotiation's process for their professionalism, communication, and willingness to understand the difficult issues and to do the hard work needed to create effective solutions for both sides. Jean Davis, Gail Dickerson, Tamika Halsey from the Illinois Education Association, Adam Ginata, Chris Ginata, Joelle Mulhern, and Kelly Rosales were the FEAs representatives, and for the Board of Education, John Fester was the board's attorney, Dr. Haley Marty, Fran LaBella, and myself rounded out the group. All of you are to be commended for this agreement and the hard work that it took to get here. Thank you.
And I'll just. And I just wanted to add, I've been on the board for a while now, and this has been one of the smoothest experiences associated with this process, so thank you. Okay, roll call.
Nelson.
Yes.
Agwara.
Yes.
Lee Strong.
Yes.
Childers.
Yes.
Ralph.
Yes.
Grace.
Yes, the motion passes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, now we move on to discussion items. The first one is the 2024-25 department plans.
So we do have two department plans to share for you tonight. We have the Business Department Plan and the Human Resources Department Plans. At a future meeting, we will have the plans for learning and instruction in special education. But first things first, Fran LaBella.
I know this plan is going to be really shocking to you. There's just a whole lot of things on there they've never seen before. The dates changed. So for the Business Department, our key things are obviously all things financial and all things capital improvements. So you'll be looking at your tentative budgets, your five-year projections. You'll be looking at the 2024-25 budget in August. The tentative budget, we'll be talking about later on this meeting. You'll be looking at your tax levy in October through December. December through March, we go back with the five-year projections again and continue every month giving you the monthly financial reports as the books close. And then additionally, again, I know you'll be shocked, it's a long-range facility plan that you will see on the next five items that we'll just continue to talk about all year long. We'll keep giving you updates on how the capital projects are going. We're going to start giving you capital project expense reports as the costs start coming in, as work starts getting done, and we're getting close to getting there. And we'll just keep updating you as any of the projects change or evolve or, you know, additions come. We're already going to bring you one issue that we've come and chew later on in this meeting, but that's kind of the thrust of our department. Questions?
I don't think so. The only thing is, I just want to highlight for the community, it's really, because there is a point where they can just go on our website to be able to learn more about that, and that'll be over the summer.
Yep.
Right, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Marty.
All right. My department works very closely with Fran, so it's fitting that we work together tonight. She has helped a lot my first year in this position. And so the first goal is, of course, recruitment and retention and finding the best quality teachers for our students, as we know that makes the greatest impact on their education. So a lot of these things say July 2024, but I'm already starting work on a lot of them now. Of course, continuing to collect exit interview data that can be done by staff that leave through an electronic form or in-person, depending on what they prefer. So I have been collecting that, of course, this spring, and will continue into next year, and using that data to identify trends. And I can bring you that data in the fall, next, this coming fall, like I did this past fall. The mentoring program, just revamping that program a little bit based on feedback from this year, what the new hires need, just seeing the progress they've made throughout the year and how we can really help support them the best way possible, and also help them early on. If we feel that staff, new staff, are struggling in January, February, March, that's too late. We need to identify if they're struggling early, September, October, November, and make tweaks. So just being really hands-on in that mentoring program and changing it a little bit, making it a little bit more current. There were some videos that we used that could have been a little more current, just discussion, just some strategies we use, could be a little more forward-thinking, so just kind of revamping that. Leading and supporting admin and staff on the new collective bargaining agreement tonight that got approved. There's a lot of benefits for our staff in there, and just making sure people are aware of their contract and what it says, and that they can have two-thirds reimbursement if they go back to school, and just great parts of the contract, and just understanding it from their sick days to everything that they're entitled to. And then goal two is hiring evaluations and onboarding, also looking at that process. So we did start a lot with inter-rater reliability between our admin this year, so that's really focused on basically if a teacher was evaluated by any administrator in our district, they would get very similar ratings. Maybe different specific feedback because every administrator is different and has different ideas and may coach them differently, but at the end of the day, they should get a similar rating, no matter who evaluates them. So we've done that through in-person walkthroughs of the schools, which has been very valuable for the administration to see the other schools, too. Lots of times you don't get a chance to go visit the other schools, so it's really great. And then looping our APs into this, this coming year, using videos to help us, training videos, discussion. And so the teachers see us come around, and really that, though, is about the administration team and our professional development and our learning. Onboarding, really looking at the onboarding process and revamping that. A lot of initial onboarding and then ongoing for our new administrators, of course, our teachers, but then adding the classified staff and the guest teachers, some onboarding for them, because that's really important, too, that they understand the expectations of the district and doing some scenarios. What happens if a student runs out of the building? What do you do? And just making sure that they're very prepared for situations, and they know what we expect when it comes to working with our students academically and behaviorally. And then the classified staff evaluation tool. Currently, the tool doesn't have the same detailed expectations, and it's not as clear for growth as we have for our certified staff that uses the Danielson. So the new classified tool that I'm collaborating with staff on and will bring to the FEA and the board to see would have those components, so they can easily see what area they fall in and what they can do to move. Those are the big rocks, and then plus a lot of little rock ideas, too, just about ways to make sure our teachers are retained because they feel valued, they know we appreciate them and celebrate them, so little retention ideas, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to the Fran show, right? You've got several, starting with the Heather Hill building renovation.
I'll start this show, but I'm going to turn it over to my friends Mike and Sean over here from Wold in a couple of minutes. But we're very excited to bring to you what we hope is the final, pretty much the final design for the Heather Hill addition. We met multiple times. We brought you the beginnings of it, of that design. We've met with Heather Hill staff. We brought Kathy Kanawa in to really kind of scrutinize what that health office would look like, and Carol Hahn and her administrative assistants put in a lot of feedback on. Haley, show us what Heather Hill Edition will look like.
Show us what's behind door number one.
There we go. All right.
I'll give color commentary as needed.
Welcome, Sean.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you, congrats.
So, yeah, so we are finally finishing up the exterior design of our building. It's always a hard, it's always a tricky decision when trying to add an addition to an existing building. It's like, how big do we want, or how new do we want it to look, how old do we want it to look? So it's always been a really hard tension between the new and the existing. So with our addition, we're planning on doing mainly brick just to keep that whole idea going, just because Heather Hill is mainly brick already. We want to use brick to its fullest potential by creating different shapes, different colors. You can see how we have some different colors going on with some brick matching the existing, another brick as an accent to keep that data lines going. We have the higher portion where the main entrance is made out of metal panel system, just to kind of give that reminiscence of the plaster that's on the existing building already, trying to match it and be a little bit newer. And then we also, it's a taller height as well, so we can get more light in to the corridor space, just because it's at that corner of the building where it's not going to get a whole lot of daylight. So we're trying to make it, with adding some additional windows to the higher portion of the building, can get some additional lighting in. But those are the main materials. We also have some accent bricks to play without. We're still playing with the color on them, but right now they're kind of jutted out to create some shadow, create some texture, just something a little bit different than what's already presented in the school. And where we see the blue, we also have a cool blue on going on. We can scroll through the next couple of renderings there to get some different angles. I really liked the next one the most, but it's just really, there's a whole lot of going, there's a whole lot going on, but also just not a whole lot going on either. It's a really good in-between, where it's new but not too new, where forward-thinking but not creating a whole new brick box that's really up there, super modernist or something crazy like that. But that's what we're doing with our design. The interior scope hasn't changed too much. Just for context, the new addition is holding the two principal offices, the conference room, the big reception area, secure vestibule, and the corridor to get to to the existing building. So then we have the red two main renovated kindergarten rooms and the So, and then we have the red two main renovated cut kindergarten rooms and the renovated interior space of the added, um, teachers lounge and the special, um, in many interventionist classroom. Um, we can keep going, but these, uh, we have shown these before. If you want a refresher, we can totally go through everything again. Um, otherwise, I'm totally here for any questions on the exterior or interior design as well, but...
Just a reminder for all of us, the interior spaces of the classrooms will also be getting a refresh at the same time that this is happening.
Yes.
That includes new ceilings as, that's needed, as well as some new paints, um, on the walls as well.
And then just, so remind me, the secure vestibule, now, there's only one way to get...
Keep going then.
Yeah, I wanna talk about page six, I think.
Here's your essentially the thing. So, you're going to come in through this door that will be secure into this vestibule. These doors will really remain closed.
Okay.
Okay, and on. So, you'll have to get into the main office here space, and then you can come into this corridor and into the building.
Who, and so if you're in the building already, you have access to that corridor, though?
Yep.
Okay.
Access to the corridor and into the reception space.
Okay.
Um, but this and this will be sealed off.
And the goal, the, well, those will have panic hardware, so they'll, they'll only be locked if you're entering the building, so when you're needing to leave, you can just leave as needed. So, that's the whole point of the secure vestibule of that is.
We did talk a little bit about having access from the nurses' office, but after talking to Kathy Kanawa, she really felt strongly about just having access to the nurses' office.
Oh, good. That makes me happy.
And to let in light, we do kind of adding a window there, it's not showing up on the floor plans right now just because of the height, but there is a window there to let in some light into the, there's a space from the corridor, because it does have those higher ceilings and the more windows, the clearer story windows, so that it's some light, so. That was the last comment when I was here, there was, thinking about some additional lighting into that interior space. Um, some things that also have changed, we added an extra window to the principal's office, so they can see onto the street as well, just some more visuals, see what's going on. Um, but other than that, just a lot of construction stuff.
Was there a conference room there? There was that, that conference room is just new, right?
Yes, that was completely the only part of the new addition right here.
Yeah, okay.
Originally, we were trying to figure out if we can squeeze that conference room in the interior renovated space, but with spatial planning and like, the need for a larger, um, teachers lounge kinda made us decide on putting that into the addition, um, just so we can have those larger kindergartens, since that's where the teachers lounge was gutted from the kindergarten space, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Trying to figure out where to put everything.
A little more secure from the rest of the building.
Yeah, I think that's good.
And if the teachers needed to bring in students from the principal's office space to the conference room for other intervention and reasons, it's another space for that, too, but...
Take us to the next one. Yeah, so that'll be a little closer, we'll get to the principal's offices again, two windows on the principal's side, and one on to the parking lot, or the playground for the assistant principal. Um, yeah, this is just a little higher for define what it is. It will be, um, let's see, the reception desk, some storage behind them, a workstation, maybe, and, you know, or...
Yeah, the point with the reception there is kind of a collaborative, collaborative area to it, that workspace, since right now the Heather Hill area is lots of casework, lots of people hanging out, so we're trying to give that a little update.
This is a closer look at the nurses' station, where she will have a sink in the area for small group separated toilet room in that office, as well as a box and a sitting and storage and so on. Again, the conference room. Okay, now this is the interior where the existing office is. Um, so what you'll end up with is really for the most part, two large spaces and a smaller space. That tech office is actually already there, it'll just kind of be massaged a little bit. The small group room, and you'll think of that as where the current principal's, um, office is and the conference room is, so we'll make that a small group, so the interventionist.
Yeah.
And then your lounge area will actually maybe be a little larger, have a space for the teachers to sit and eat lunch, um, and a work room attached to it, as well as, as a toilet room in there, then, as well.
And some things to be noted is that where we see those black boxes at the bottom of the screen there, those were the original doors that are being removed, just to allow more space in that interior space. We had to reroute the library out through a different door, so we are adding a new door in the library. Um, but that's the reason why those are there, just to allow more space for the small group and the lounge. We were able to remove those doors, but...
That'll be here. So, the one piece that we're covering really is getting expanded, so there, right now, where the teachers lounge is, that wall will come down, and that kindergarten room will get additional space. Will be moved in the toilet room to the front of the room here. Um, the student cookbooks and shelving are currently outside of the classroom. They'll be moved into the classroom for the new teachers. Um, and then we'll just, you know, have a little more, more room in, in that classroom, the student art room.
Yeah.
These spaces. Um, that is the existing kindergarten room, the, the first room right, right next to the addition. Um, really have to change the footprint from this room, um, but we're gonna be leaving some, uh, casework around and, and just kind of cleaning up some of the work.
We are demoing the existing casework here as well for that new toilet room, so that's what we do. We are adding some additional storage just to supplement what was taken away. Um, so we do, uh, we are accommodating that with some additional storage space in case we're...
Those cookbooks and shelving is actually in on the interior of this classroom already, and will remain there as a minute here for the second classroom. And again, the exterior, a little...
Everything on the exterior is labeled on this sheet for everything.
Are, are there any changes being made to the current main entrance to kind to fit in with the appearance of the new entrance?
Good question, and it's, uh, no. Right now, that door is being left to remain, door A, and we do this. Um, but the issue with the current doors is that they didn't know where the entrance was, so that's why we are doing this addition, so those are gonna be left to remain.
We'll be using that, and they will, I believe, Carol, will be using that door to actually exit and enter the students, the beginning and the end of the day, because the buses will be right there, so we'll be straight shot out that door, right, correct? That's what you're saying?
So, no security concerns? I mean, the, the driving force was improvement in security with the new entrance?
Well, that door will be just, will be locked all day, just kinda like the flip side, where we're putting the additional, this addition, that door is always locked during the day, except for arrival dismissal. It'll be the same, you just flip down the other side of it.
So, there will be no opportunity to buzz in from that door anymore?
Yeah, that will be just...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm very encouraged by the start of this process. Um, Sean, Mike, the rest of the team, really receptive. There's a lot of chefs in that, in that kitchen during those meetings, and I think they've both been really receptive to the ideas, pushed back when they've had to, but if, if this is an indication of the future work, I'm, I'm really confident in our work with WOLD, so thank you.
And I think we'd be ridiculous if we didn't mention that we've always been partners in this. They had a lot of really good ideas and design ideas when it, when it came to, from a construction perspective, where we should put certain things in order to save the district some money when it comes to the hard construction costs.
And this is to start summer 2025?
Correct.
Yep, okay.
About spring.
Spring. In 2025, how about that?
People more than likely start breaking ground with the school itself.
Okay.
Any more questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Pepper pre-construction fee proposals for 2025 work?
Yes, so this is, um, Pepper's, um, proposal for, again, it's, it's the 2025 work, so it's all of this Heather Hill addition, and it is the refresh for Serena Hills and Heather Hill. Um, their fee came in a hundred and seventy-three dollars higher than what they proposed when we did the RFP. So, I'm very happy with the work that they've done and everything that they've said that they would do, they've done, and every fee that they said that they would be charging, they've not been over, so.
Good.
So, that would be for next, next year's work. Um, their big piece of that comes now when we start putting the bid packs together for these addition. And now the icky one.
Any questions on the Pepper pre-construction? All right, Heather Hill interior paint?
Get me to the Pepper's. Hmm, no, the other one. Pictures, please. They're worth salads and words. Okay. In the interior of Heather Hill, pretty much where the original piece of the building is, sometime, a long time ago, when they put the first level of paint on the walls, something wasn't right, whether it was moisture or some sort of kind of something. But the first round of paint hasn't been adhering to the concrete. So, you're, you're seeing a lot of peeling, you can see all the texture to it. Those are all layers of paint. Keep going. So, you see peeling, chipping, et cetera, all through the main building. Um, as the years have gone on, Scotty's crew was like, you know, basically scraped what they could off, but this is all throughout the main area, the, the central area of the building. Um, originally, we thought that it was in the entire building, but thankfully it's not. It cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to fix. Um, now, can you get me the other, uh, the explanation? Yeah, there you go. Um, right now, when we started looking at it, it looks like it's gonna be less costly. We're hoping under a hundred thousand dollars, closer to the eighty-five thousand dollar range. Um, what we would like to do is take a couple of spaces this coming summer and work with a contractor to remove the paint down to the concrete to see, A, how long it's going to take, B, how well it comes off, and then put some paint on the concrete to make sure that it adheres properly. As you can see in the, the walls behind you, um, you, you don't see that effect. Um, but because that, that base coat is not adhering, it's just causing it all to peel off. It gets heavy and, and it, and it comes down. Um, we had Sherwin-Williams come out and actually take a look at this, and, um, yeah, it's, it's the, it's the original, like, layers. So, the only way to, to stop this from happening is, is to, to just pretty much sandblast the concrete and get them off.
And this is only happening in these particular rooms in this building?
Correct.
Wow.
Correct. So, it is our recommendation that we take care of it. It seems like this is the time to do it. It's just gonna continue to happen until we get it all down to the base. Um, Scotty, you got anything to add on that?
No, we've, you know, as that chipping has happened, has been going on the last couple of years, the, the chipping gone off and just kind of painting, um, but it's, I don't know if you, it, it, it didn't show great in the picture, but that leaves like a texture
Yeah.
part, right? So, we got some of the scraping all the way down to the block. Some of it is still the original with probably ten or fifteen layers of paint, and then we're painting over all of that, so. And as our paint then dries, that original stuff is, is painted off, it's tidying up, it's kind of off. So, really, the best solution here, completely take it all the way off, is, uh, chemi- which is option two, that's what we're, that's what it is, right? Just scroll up.
Yeah.
That's what we're looking at. Option two, to chemically remove all of it and live it up and repaint.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke, because the original price came in at close to a half a million dollars, and we're down to a hundred and fifty, so there's just too many numbers coming at us. But a hundred and fifty is still obnoxious, but, um, it's better than half a million, so.
What would the price be, it, so this, for the, the mock-up and the, the trial this summer, what would the price be? Is this this one hundred and...
We're looking at probably, I mean, we're probably looking at eight thousand dollars for this, yeah, for this summer, just to make sure that it's gonna work. Our concern is, there's so much work happening at Heather next summer, we don't wanna, we kinda wanna make sure that this is going to work. We don't wanna find out in the middle of the whole refresh that this isn't working. Um, we'd rather take a stab at it this year. That way, we can get an idea of how long it's going to take in each room, and we can plan better ahead for, for what it needs to be.
And that's, that's the eight thousand roughly?
Yeah, and then doing the whole building, well, the, all the building walls that are affected would be about a hundred and fifty. And that, of course, is gonna be an add-on to the, the construction that we're already doing. So, this is, this is, in, in essence, this is your first major change order.
Thank you. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
That's all for construction for today.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Onto the budget.
Okay, tentative budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. The tentative budget is done in our Forecast Five model. So, these are estimates based on projections. And here are our assumptions. For the property taxes, um, the twenty-four levy is at three point four percent. That's what CPI will be, um, and two point five percent thereafter. We're, see how, what happens with CPI, but we'll start there. Um, we are taking the 2021 property tax relief grant abatement and making it permanent, and the 2022 is recaptured in 2024. Um, we, with that property tax relief grant, uh, being made permanent, we are not adding any additional monies to the evidence-based funding model for this. Um, we are eliminating all the ESAR funds, and, um, we are increasing the transportation claim by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, this just kinda gives you a graph of where CPI has been, keeping in mind those two huge years in there where your CPI was at seven and six and a half percent, we were capped at five, okay? When you put those assumptions into your model, here's what it looks like. Um, right now, you can see that our local sources are at thirty-nine percent, and our state funding is at thirty. Really, that's majority because those federal monies were at seven percent due to ESAR. We, we lose, we lose the ESAR funds. Um, so federal goes back to four percent, which is about where we've historically been. Our local sources go up to fifty-six percent. That is your property tax, and your state funding is at about forty percent of your total funds. So, we're back to what the model had been looking like prior to COVID. On the expense side, um, what you see here on the current year budget is a whole lot of other, and that was your bond per, your bond sale, okay? So, because of the way they have us book it, you're gonna see thirteen million dollars in an other expense, and it's really just the, the purchasing of your bonds. Um, our personnel costs are now sixty, it's, right, again, we're back to where we were pre-COVID. Personnel is sixty-six, and, um, versus forty-nine percent, again, we lose about, we lost positions due to ESAR.
Yeah.
So, when the funding left, we lost the positions. Um, but we, um, kept all of the purchase services in there. The other will reduce, the other expense, that eight percent is really mostly special ed at this point. Um, it's our outplaced students. Um, supplies and materials are at six percent. You were showing four... You were showing four last year. Again, it was the the ESER shuffle. And your capital outlay is going to be much larger than it was. Well, it's going to be larger because it's going to include the the construction, but we're going to keep that separate for the time being. But really, your costs are personnel.
Wait, so Fran, tell me again why at current it's only forty-nine percent.
Because when.
But we lost, so why is it going up?
Well, we did. It is going up because the emphasis of that other, that thirteen million dollars in bond funds just shifts all the percentages.
Oh, right, right, right.
Is the big problem.
Okay, okay.
If I had pulled out the other expenses, which quite honestly, I probably should have, your personnel is going to look pretty similar to what you have this year.
Okay, okay. I see what you're saying.
Let's go, let's do real numbers. Over the five years, there it is. Over the five years, your education fund is pretty much a status, is is holding its own. The deficits that you're going to see, per usual, how we've been looking at this for years, is on your operations and maintenance fund. We don't have enough money in the levy to cover O and M. It's always running between one point two and one point five million dollars in a hole. That is not including construction. That is just the running of the buildings. Okay? So when I come to you with a total deficit of about one point two million dollars, I will tell you it is your operations, your your O and M fund. And that's kind of where we've been running for at least the last ten years. But in total, when you look at your total fund balances, your deficits really are are very small. You are still going to be looking at by projected twenty-twenty-nine, twenty-seven million dollars in bank, which is higher than what your fund balance policy is. However, this is only your operating funds, and we will be looking at some construction money where we know that we're going to be using some fund balances very purposefully to finish the classroom refreshes. Okay? Which will get you more in line with what your fund balance policy is. Again, by the end of twenty-twenty-eight, you are still looking at two hundred and twenty-seven days of cash on hand to pay bills. So should you end up not taking in any additional revenue, you still have almost, you know, three quarters of a year to handle your bills with.
And Fran, that's based on our current projections for CPI?
Correct.
Okay.
What happened to that one? Can you go to that last slide, next steps? Because it didn't. So what my staff does for the rest of the year now is we start drilling down line by line. We are going to take that collective bargaining agreement that we just agreed to, which was built into the assumptions in the model. But we are going to now drill in line by line, person by person, FTE by FTE. We look at each and every one of those lines in a, you know, one by one, looking at last year, looking at this year, and build this, build the budget. We will have a budget book for you in August, on August twelfth. You'll get the the budget book. On the twenty, the August twenty-sixth meeting, we'll give you a full-on presentation of everything that's included in that budget book. And then you'll have your hearing and adoption on September ninth. What we ask for you to do next board meeting is just adopt a tentative budget so that we can continue spending. It's kind of an old-fashioned thing that I'd like to do. I prefer to have board approval on July one to continue spending money. A lot of districts don't do that until September, but it seems to me that you should give the authority to continue to spend. So we will work with with this budget for the next several months, and we will be giving you that full, full book. We expect that this budget will be pretty close to basically even. We don't, we don't see any major deficits or any major surpluses on this one. Capital projects, we will report to you separately because that is outside of the operating budget. Questions for the moment?
Questions? Thank you.
It's still her. One more thing.
Can't wait for the budget books. The gigantic binder.
No doubt.
Do this request for proposal, but I'm getting very excited now because we can do this request for proposal, but I'm getting very excited now because we can see what Parker's Kitchen could be. We have sat and met with Arbor Management and really took a look at all of the equipment that is in the kitchen. It is all very, very old. And we're going to put some fun sparkling paint on Parker, and we are going to add some additional lunches for the kids to have every single day. But with that, we're going to need some new equipment, especially with COVID funds. Since two thousand and eighteen, the program has put on a surplus of about, we've have about an excess of two hundred and ninety thousand dollars that we've made. A lot of that money was from from ESER funds that came to help supplement supply chain issues and so on. But that money is supposed to be reinvested back into the program. So we could think of no better way than to use about a hundred and ten thousand of it to purchase nice new equipment where they'll be able to make pizzas every day and chicken sandwiches every day. And we will have a nice, there's a nice plan for a new salad bar and and some really nice options. In the meantime, Jennifer Hall, as I think I mentioned before, our art teacher, one of our art teachers over at Parker has got some some gifted art kids ready to go, and and they're gonna, they're gonna mural the place up. And we're meeting with them next week to make sure that she's got the right paints and and everything, make sure that it's going to just kind of pop for us. So we're really excited to get started, but but this is our recommendation to to let's kind of just get rid of some of the the old equipment that's really starting to cost money to repair and kind of put a nice new shiny face on the Parker cafeteria. Kind of goes nice and hand in hand with the whole refresh of the buildings, too. Questions? No?
Exciting.
Yeah.
I can't wait to see it be more colorful and, you know.
Something other than Dover white.
Yeah.
Thank you, Fran.
Okay, now we move on to City Year partnership.
Welcome, Emma Bell.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
So next year, we, of course, will continue to monitor those early indicators that students need, may need intervention to be successful in school that we've been monitoring this school year, including behavior, attendance, and grades. City Year presented itself as an opportunity for us to be able to do that more systematically at our junior high school and more comprehensively. This is an opportunity that both have experience working with City Year and prior experiences and can attest to the valuable impact that having a City Year team in the building will provide. So what City Year does is it is a partnership with the AmeriCorps program. It places young people ages eighteen through twenty-four, a team of eight of them who are Corps members who become part of the fabric of the school. So they participate in everything at the school. They're there all day from sunup to sundown, and they are there the entire school year. Some of the more specific things that they provide, and I'll talk a little bit about each layer, but they provide after-school activities, including like chess or things that we, some of the things that we do already, but just more on a more expanded level. They also do a small group intervention and social-emotional learning support for students. They also do one-on-one tutoring with students during the school day. There's also just an overall within the program that's called the City Year Effect that is just the overall presence of eight young people who are highly motivated, highly excited about school, in their red jackets every day, cheering kids on every day when they enter the building, sending kids off in a positive way every day, doing rallies and attendance and motivation incentives throughout the school year. That is also part of what the team does. So I'm going to talk a little bit about those early warning interventions that we've been working on this this year that City Year will support with. The team members will each be placed with a teacher, so they're in a classroom the entire day. We'll, we'll need to do some work to identify who those teachers are. But essentially, each each team member from City Year is placed with a teacher who is is passionate about classroom environment and classroom community, has very strong relationships with their students so that the City Year team member can be woven into that. So this is typically for teachers who might have a few more years of experience and just knowledge of building those routines and structures in their classroom. Each Corps member will be assigned a caseload of about twenty students, and throughout the day, they will work with those students on small group activities, social-emotional learning. Those are also the students that they'll do more intensive attendance monitoring with to get at some of the chronic absenteeism things that we've been trying to address, particularly at our junior high this school year. So they make connections with the families. They'll get to know who those students' siblings are, introduce themselves to that student's parents. Just those personal connections and the mentoring relationship that we try to provide on, we do provide through our many, many support staff that we have, but there's always more that we can do. And these City Year team members will be freed up entirely to do that work. In addition to making those social-emotional connections, their academic tutoring runs throughout the day as well as after school. So they'll run tutoring groups after school, and they'll work one-on-one with their students on their caseload throughout the day. And again, I mentioned just the whole school impact. The pep rallies, the greeting students at the door, all of that is built into the City Year work. Also, each team throughout the school year will do several service projects. The team will work with the Parker team to determine what those are. But they get kids involved in things like painting murals at the school, redesigning classroom spaces, providing art experiences for other students, so really getting their students on their caseload involved in service for the school as part of their work as a team. Okay, we talked a little bit about those things. A little bit more on the classroom-level work. As I mentioned, a City Year team member will be assigned into a teacher's classroom. One of the longer-term benefits of having a City Year partnership, and it's it's a less formal aspect of the partnership, but these are young people who are on some level interested in education as a field. And so they get to know their classroom teacher. They get to know their classroom teacher's instruction. And the teacher themselves also becomes somewhat of a mentor to each team member, creating some potential for a pipeline of staff once they're done with their AmeriCorps service to join our team if there's, of course, availability and if they're interested. But part of this connection is creating a pipeline of educators that are interested in joining our team. One thing that sort of captures everything that the City Year team does is, again, they become the success coach for the students that are assigned to their caseload. So at the end of the year, each Corps member will touch base with the family of the students on their caseload and just share a year-end review of this is, this is what we worked on. These are the connections that we made. This is how your child's attendance improved throughout the school year. This is how your child's academic proficiency improved based on our one-on-one tutoring and really just rebuilding that mentor and that near-peer relationship so that students really feel successful as being a part of the City Year program. City Year is available for any school. We feel strongly that the right fit for ours context is joining at the junior high. The work is geared a little bit more towards junior high and high school students. And we think just looking at our behavior, attendance, and grades, monitoring that we've been doing throughout the school year, starting the work at the junior high would be the best fit right now. It's, one of the major benefits of picking up this partnership is that while the cost of a hundred and thirty thousand, which would be covered on our end somewhere between Title and ESER funds, that is, of course, a large cost. But when we really break down the individual cost of all the things in terms of those wraparound supports and the early warning supports that we would want to put in place for students, between one-on-one tutoring, small group tutoring, social-emotional support, after-school programs, and the attendance outreach and monitoring alone, the the cost of those things individually would be much higher than what the cost is of having a City Year team. So, of course, we want to be mindful of scaling this program because it, you know, it's it's a lot of money. But we feel like individually, we would end up spending so much more just to have even a portion of the services that City Year provides.
I had some questions if you're.
Sure.
So this is new to me. I've never heard of this opportunity with this, the, never heard. So can you help me to explain who these eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds are? Will they be required, obviously, I'm assuming, to be background-checked, things of that nature? How do they have qualifications to do any tutoring? Will they be familiar with our curric?
Would you mind, Selena? There's no way she's going to be able to answer those.
Just, I can think it's maybe just qualifications.
Absolutely.
And I think I'm just naming just a couple of things. So obviously, background-checked individuals, familiarization with our curriculum, our new grading scale, just our current overall, what what our school day looks like, and also how.
Training and quality.
I think I understand. Yeah, absolutely.
I don't, I'm, from what this sounds like, is we have a group of advantageous eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds who are looking to potentially get into education, and we're going to bring them in and.
Yes. There's a lot that happens before they join.
Right, okay.
So they are vetted and selected by the AmeriCorps program. So they're, they, they have an application process that they do on that side of things. They are not our staff members. They are dedicating a year of service to the AmeriCorps program. The AmeriCorps program runs the City Year program. What that means is that they also have a manager that works with them and and comes into the building and monitors their work, works closely with the building principal to make sure that the things that the team is doing are in alignment with what the building's plans are. So every week, they will have check-ins with their own City Year manager, and that manager will also check in with our building leadership. So back, things like background checking, the safety and security things, those are handled on the AmeriCorps side. We will, of course, review all of that and vet all of that before they start. In terms of understanding the logistics of our school day and our school year and and also our values, it's a major part of their onboarding, if you will, is that they participate in all professional development that happens at the building. They join us for our institute days. They join for staff meetings. They become really part of the fabric of the building. So that's how they get up to speed on how we do things and also how they are managed on the AmeriCorps and the City Year side.
Do you have any concern of this being an added responsibility to one of our teachers that, I mean, obviously, they would have to be in a green agreement to do this as well. But would this add more, more for our classroom teachers, too?
Sure. And I think it's important to note that not every teacher will be assigned a team member. That process for teachers being assigned to a City Year team member is equally important. The partnership has to be willing on both sides. The teacher has an application process to really be someone who wants to help influence a City Year team member's work in their classroom. It is always an added thing, but it is an added positive. added positive thing. In my experience as teachers who have had a City Year team member really become mentors to the City Year team member in and of, it's, that partnership in and of itself is very strong. So the will has to be there on both sides.
Okay, thank you.
How will you roll, how will this get rolled out? Because every student won't be impacted or connected with one of these.
Absolutely.
So how will you communicate that, you know?
Absolutely. We would start by looking at the data that we've been monitoring all school year, including our behavior attendance and grades data, to really identify the right students to work with a City Year team member. There is a process for, between City Year and the school, to notify the parents of this is the opportunity for your student, and there's also that relationship piece that happens between the parent and the City Year team member. So you're absolutely right, not every student is appropriate for working with a City Year team member. Really, all three of those data points need to line up, behavior, attendance, and grades, and that chronic absenteeism piece that we've been monitoring this year is, is really key in this process.
Thank you.
My question kind of piggybacks on that. So is this, like, does every school that does this get eight, or did we identify eight because we have about 160 students that we think would benefit from?
Absolutely. Every school who participates in City Year gets six to eight team members. That is part of the model, to have a, a large team supporting in any building.
Okay.
Are these students local? Like, do they live in our community or?
They could be, absolutely. It just depends. Typically, and this is certainly not across the board, but in the city, for example, I try to place City Year team members close to where they live because of transportation. They typically utilize public transportation or just in some cases. I don't know if that will be the case here, but there is certainly a benefit to being as close in your community as possible.
Yeah, I think part of what was shared with us when we met is that they do have young adults who want to participate but may not be able to make it all the way up to the west side.
Right.
Or, you know, pick your place in the city, and so this offers an advantageous, advantageous opportunity for them, at least participate in the southland instead of having to go all the way into Chicago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and just before we end, Dr. Palmer Pratt, who is one of our District 161 parents, who is a managing director with City Year, brought this to us. Amabel, I think, is, in our whole team is to be commended because frankly, without having the understanding of where we stand because of our bag reports, it'd be really hard to jump at a, at an opportunity like this. It sounds great, for sure. It's also a lot of money. If we didn't know and be able to really demonstrate to us, we have these kids who could use this support, particularly in these areas, it would have been hard to bring this to the board. So just kudos to Amabel and the team, really Tara and Michelle and Ursula and Mario, really kind of driving those bag reports, keeping that data clean so that we know who needs support, and now we can add additional resources to help.
You just made me think of something else. So we'll be able to measure effectiveness through improvement in those reports? Is that, that's where you're looking to have the measurements?
Absolutely. I think, you know, we heard an audience comment that, yes, all of these pieces are great, but the kids need to be there, they need to be engaged in order for us to generate positive growth for the, for them. This helps us do that.
And I do, just, just adding on to that, the mentorship piece is something that we're constantly looking for opportunities for students to be mentored and for others to mentor them, and this just creates so many layers of that support for our kids and our teachers.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now we'll have the preschool update.
Welcome, Crystal and Jackie.
Hello, everybody. Thank you again for having us, so we can give you an update on the preschool program.
All right.
Okay, so just to kind of recap, our preschool program is a grant-funded program. We have two sessions that we service students, a morning session for two and a half hours and an afternoon session for two and a half hours. We do target age ranges three to five, and we, our program is specifically for students that are at risk. The preschool program is grant-funded. Like I said, we do have session, money that is funded through there to cover things like parent engagement, our preschool screenings, high-quality curriculum, and of course, our teacher salaries. So as of right now, we did expand our program this year. We did open up a blended preschool classroom. So as of right now, our program can support 110 students. That is three preschool, excuse me, three preschool classroom teachers and three parent professionals. Again, those are all grant-funded positions. Also included in the grant, we allow a line item for professional development for staff, the curriculum costs and different supplies such as furniture or some of the consumables that we purchase. We do also cover family activities like our preschool prom or our different family engagement opportunities that we've had, and also field trips as well as a portion of transportation. Okay, so we kind of broke this down by school. So as of right now, at Flossmore Hills, we are currently full. So both of our preschool sessions in the morning, Ms. Willard's class is full with 20 students, Ms. Burnett's EC classroom is full with 10, and the same for the PM session, 20 and 10. At Western Avenue at this time, our morning session with Ms. Conroy is full, and we have seven spots open in that afternoon session. So as of right now, we have 13 students. In our blended classroom with Ms. King, we currently have 13 students in the morning with two spots open. That room can hold 15 students, and the afternoon session has 11 students with four spots open. We are unfortunately losing a lot of our students this year that are going to be going to kindergarten, so just kind of looking forward to the fall. We have at our Western Avenue morning class, we'll have 13 students that are returning, so that means we have seven open spots. In the PM session, we have 10 and 10. Our blended classroom has seven students that are returning to us with eight open spots, and in the PM session for our blended, we have six and nine, so nine open spots. Okay. At our Flossmore Hills location, we are going to have 13 students returning to Ms. Willard's class with seven spots open. Ms. Willard's PM session will be 10 and 10, and the early childhood classroom in the morning, as of right now, has three students returning with seven open spots and one in the afternoon with nine open spots. Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to-
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this is a list of all of our preschool screenings that we have done since July. On the right side of the column, there are a number of students that we have screened versus the number of students that have qualified for our program. As of Friday, we have officially completed 34 special education evaluations with 26 of those students qualifying for specialized services. Okay. And then as far as future needs of the program, some of the students we have lost this year due to constraints with attendance and busing, also the lack of a full-day program. A lot of our families really need kind of that full-day programming because they do work. So we are looking at options as far as opening a full-day program. And then we also need some additional space to supri, provide some intervention support to our students with additional needs. So for example, our sensory room or gross motor room, and again, just busing.
And those are future needs that are two years down the road for the full-day program. You just sort of have the space.
Correct. And here are some pictures of some of our events, our preschool prom, some of our field trips, parent engagement activities. Any questions?
So this is a question for you, Dana. Then how are we, thank you both. This is, I, I, it's helpful for me to have an understanding of where we are. So what are we thinking about, and so, so we're not at a tipping point, but kind of we are. What are we thinking about, like, next five, 10 years?
So, this will really drive a conversation next March, April, realistically. The reason that I think that timeline is most important is because we will have bid all of the summer '25 work.
Okay.
Which will also give us a framework for what those classroom and building renovations look like. So at the very least, we can extrapolate, okay, if Heather Hill was this per, per square foot, Flossmore Hills should be this, Western Avenue, Serena, Parker. That gives us a really good idea on where we're going to land with our construction funds. The other piece that Fran mentioned was we're a little bit higher than we wanted to be on our fund balance based on Board Policy 420. So this will give us an opportunity to say, okay, we don't want to, you don't want, you never want to, we will never recommend that we spend fund balance on an ongoing, you know, expenditure. That's just an easy way to get rid of fund balance, and then you don't have a way to deal with it. But next March or April, we'll have an idea of what that fund balance is. We can have this conversation about where we realistically think pre-K services should be in our district, if we were going to add full-day classrooms. We need, we know that we need sensory spaces, things of that nature. We've talked about this being, this building being a pre-K center. All those things are great, but there's also a few other dominoes that tip over. If we make this a pre-K center, where do all the people go? And so, we know that there's going to be a, a big cost with that. That's a perfect time to have that conversation with the board, because if we say, "Look, we can get all of this done. It's going to cost X millions of dollars for us to renovate this building, create space for the adults to work, and then we can offer X number of full-day classrooms, we can offer tuition-based classrooms, we can bring all of our resources and support here to have everyone in the same building so that they could have their own school within a school, in professional learning communities." At least the board can have a conscious decision about that. So we're really thinking next March or April, not that it ends there, but at least we start. And then we can say, okay, as we're moving through construction, if we are keeping this as a larger project, great, we can, you know, start pressing on those buttons as well, but at least we'll know what we're getting into. We'll have a better idea of where the, the dollars are landing, because that's, that's really the, the issue here. Do we have the money to pay for it? Right now in fund balance, I would say certainly, but we also haven't really gotten into the construction dollars yet. So let's see what happens with that over the next 10 months, 12 months, and then we'll be able to have a good conversation next spring.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Okay, Governor State University Counseling Services proposal.
So the district has had a ongoing relationship with Dr. Kuntz for the last few years. He has provided contract services when we were in need of school psychologists and doing those assessments for us. He reached out to me. He has some graduate students that are in the clinical mental health program, and he is looking to do some counseling and having our students be, be able to benefit from that. So the counseling services would begin in June through August. They would be conducted through the GSU Counseling Center, Governor State University. The program aims to enhance those training experiences of the graduate students, to allow them to work with adolescent youth. The purpose of this project is really geared towards our adolescents. They're focusing on that in their study this, this semester or through, just because of the needs that are surrounding our young adults. Families that are interested in this opportunity would get, would directly contact Dr. Kuntz. However, we would be collaborating with him to, to coordinate on those consents, making sure that everybody had all the appropriate paperwork and everything needed for him to be able to see those students. And the students also will be supervised by him and other licensed clinicians. And the students, the graduate students would be doing this either virtually or at the lab at Governor State, and it is free of cost. He is not requiring us to give any payments.
How do you plan on getting this out to our families, or would this be a need base for identified students?
So he did draft a flyer that would go out to all of our students at Parker Junior High. We also can go through our counselors now, our social workers, and see if there are key students that they would recommend for the services, but he did, it was, it is open, it would be open to all students that wanted to take advantage of it.
Was there any conversation about the duration of this program? Is this a one-year deal, or are they looking-
So it's a small period of time. It is just from June until, let's see, until August, till the end of August. There isn't really any, I think it's through a class or a semester, a summer semester for the students to work with our students.
And can you add some clarity to the distinction between licensed eligible and licensed counselors?
Sure. So students that are just about to be licensed within a mental health program as a social worker or a licensed therapist, they are doing those clinical hours and they're under supervision at that point, at the very end of their licensure. So they have probably completed all the course requirements, completed all the correct tests and things like that, and they're just awaiting that licensure, and they're also being supervised by Dr. Kuntz.
Okay.
Similar to student teaching?
Yes, similar to student teaching, yes. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, any other, okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Yeah, one, one other piece that, that we didn't add, I should have mentioned this during the, the pre-K report, or certainly when we recognized our pre-K teachers, but the number of positive compliments that I have personally received regarding the teachers in the program, the experiences for children, maybe the rigor, that's a weird thing to say for pre-K, but it isn't just come in and play. It is a, a program that really engages students, builds on their natural curiosities, and we absolutely have the right people in, working not only in the classrooms but in the office as well. So not only thank you to the team again, we'll reach out to them, but to Crystal and Jackie as well. We've made a lot of growth in that program. We're expanding it continually, and it's a, it's just a, it's a shining spot for us right now. So thank you.
And the last discussion item is the District 161 Volunteer Handbook.
Yes, we know that community members, community resources play a huge part in a vibrant school community. Flossmore District 161 is no different. We have a number of volunteers in our schools, and actually, this is an opportunity for us to provide just a little bit more process and procedure around how we bring our volunteers in, the work that we're doing with them, how we can focus them, provide them with support. You know, this, we have a handbook here that does have, it speaks to things like confidentiality, which we currently don't address, at least not formally. It speaks to an application process where we can kind of get people where they want to be. I've met with the Flossmore Community Relations Commission, the District PTO, and as I meet with these different groups, the consistent feedback is, we want to get involved, whether they are people who already have children in our schools, whether they are people whose children have, you know, exited, they've gone to high school and they're now, now in college and they're empty nesters. There's a number of people who want to participate. This is an opportunity for us to leverage the experience in our community and the people who want to get involved. So we generated this handbook to identify not only just some general information, procedures, you know, how to fill out the application, all of that, all of those different pieces, but on the back end, it's really important for us to know who's there. So, you know, matching people with the school that they'd like to volunteer in. If they live, you know, in Chicago Heights and they can walk across the street to Serena Hills, we'd love to place them at Serena Hills. But also, here's what it means to be a volunteer, right? I think that's a theme that you're going to hear, whether we're talking about new onboarding, new staff members, new programs. In order for us to replicate success, we have to be incredibly clear about what that means in our district and what we're willing to invest in those people to deliver it. So this clarifies a number of the different pieces, our expectations, how to handle some different situations. Of course, you know, the next steps from this handbook would be, you know, specific training for volunteers. One backend change that we're going to make on the spreadsheet side is developing different forms so that when they populate, principals and office staff get notified and their spreadsheet fills with people who are looking to volunteer in their schools. But at the end of the day, this is a process that we're looking to leverage to get more people into the building, who are better prepared to support our students and really support classroom experiences, could be social emotional experiences, certainly PTO experiences. And as many of you up here can attest to, you see a lot of the same faces at PTO meetings year over year, whether or not, and I know specifically of people this year who don't even have children in the school and they're on the PTO. That's incredible. That speaks to the work that we do, speaks to the values of that particular human that they're willing to give their time when they don't have a child in that building, and I also know that there are people who want to get involved. So this- So this is one way for us to organize this process, give some feedback, but also have a procedure with it.
Is there any, is there any opportunity to run this by any of the volunteers that you think?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, so part of, we met, we shared this with community engagement. My next thought was, and we had a couple here tonight I was hoping to get my hooks into before they left, but we'll share this with the District PTO to say, okay, what's wrong with it, what's missing? What can we change? You know, what's going to be most valuable for people who want to volunteer? So that's the next step. You know, once I have your feedback, if there are any changes, we'll kind of go back and make those, and then get it to the District PTO. And I know in previous experiences, they are really good with feedback in letting us know, eh, you're missing the mark here, why don't we think about it this way? Or asking tough questions that lead to a better result.
Perfect. Any other questions? Okay, any questions about the information items? Well then sadly, that's the end of our agenda. May I have a motion to close the general session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
8:34, Courtney.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Have a great night.